August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Finger, please hold your roll.
Mayor Messer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Here.
Mr. Sellers? Mr. Sellers is absent. Mrs. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Lammerow?
Here.
Mrs. Eggers?
Here.
Mr. Coke?
Here.
I think in a motion to excuse Mr. Sellers.
So moved.
Second.
All favor. Thank you. Mr. Coke, is you the invitation today?
Yes.
Please join us for the invocation and pledge.
Honors and honor ahead, I appreciate it. Heavenly Father, thank you for this moment together. I'd ask for your divine wisdom as we make decisions for the city. Lord, thank you for everyone that's here, and I recognize you as my Savior. And I ask this in your son's name, amen.
Pledge to the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in thy fold, with thy great and just our.
Any consideration of council work session minutes June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five? Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Please hold your roll.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
And then you'll see consideration of council meeting minutes June twenty-fourth. We do not have those. We're gonna adopt those at our next meeting. Next, we have with us Henry Pennick. Thank you for joining us tonight. He is the state champion rodeo. What is it?
High school rodeo.
High school rodeo. So the high school rodeo state champion from Lebanon. And we wanted to honor you tonight. We've got a picture, I guess, of, was this the competition? Was that the picture of the competition that you?
That's one of them.
That's one of them?
Yes.
So if you want, you can come up to the podium. We'd love to kind of get an idea of, probably rodeo is probably new to most people.
Yes.
But maybe we could go over kind of what we were talking about earlier? Kind of how your schedule's set up and how your season works and points and things like that. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, high school rodeo is, it's fun and we have a lot of rodeos. You know, we have probably, I think it's like seven or eight rodeos and then we'll have state finals. And there's about four board riders from Ohio in the high school. And you just kind of compete all year against them and you get points for winning. And whoever racks up the most points at the end of the season is the state champ, so. And there is another kid that me and him kind of was in first and second place going all throughout the year, so. And it was all like that, so. And then you go out to finals, which is a really cool deal.
And the finals was in Wyoming?
Yes.
In July?
Wow.
And you, and there was eighteen hundred contestants from forty-four states, five Canadian provinces, Australia, Mexico, New Zealand, Guatemala, so.
Yes.
And you were, you came in, you were one point away from being top twenty?
Yes, sir, so.
So where was that? Wow.
Yeah, there's two rounds and a short round. And there in the first round, I rode my first bull. And I got a score. And in the second round, I rode my bull for about, I think, six seconds and supposed to ride for eight, but that didn't happen, so I was kind of hoping and praying that I made it back to the short round. But I ended up, I was, I think I ended up fourteenth in the first round. And I was kind of, a lot of guys put on higher scores and throughout the second round, so they kind of bumped me out. And I think I tied, it was a three-way tie for the score I got, so we all ended up twenty-first and.
That's fantastic.
Is it all just based on time or are they looking at particular movements, the way you stay on it? Or is it just basically survival when you get a point? Because you win, you stay on.
So the, like, board riding, you have to stay on for eight seconds and then it's like a fifty-fifty score. You're, you can get the highest score of a hundred, but an average score is probably seventy-five to eighty-five points. And that kind of depends on how well you're riding, like how well your form is and then how well the bull's doing. If the bull's like spinning and jumping real high, you'll get a higher score if you're riding. And if a bull's just kind of just jumping down the pin, you'll get a lower score, so. It kind of all depend on that and then.
Basically, you have to risk your life and you get more points. You gotta make it real mad.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Well, go ahead.
I was gonna say, was that in Cheyenne?
Uh, no, it was, Cheyenne has a pro rodeo out there, Pierce City Rodeo. But our finals was in Rock Springs, which is kind of, I think, like three hours west of there. And it's a cool spot there. It was a really cool spot and a lot of senior. And last year, I was in junior high and I won state last year too, so. I, with, the finals was out in, I think, where was it? Des Moines, Iowa?
Mm-hmm.
And I ended up, I rode bareback steers, which you're supposed to ride on horses, but I rode bareback steers and then rode bulls. And I made the, so I rode both in my first round, my first round bull, my first round bareback steer. And then my fir-, my second round bull and steer. And I made it back to the short round in both of those. And I think I ended up nineteenth in the board riding and then fourteenth in the bareback riding. So that, that finals was a little bit better than this year, but still had a fun time of both.
So this is a certificate, it's a long time coming.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
Where do you go to school?
Uh, Lebanon.
You're Lebanon?
Yes, sir.
Do you know Kyle Manigan in Lebanon?
Yes, sir. I traveled with him and he high school rodeoed too, so he is kind of one of the guys that kind of put pressure on me a little bit.
I'm very good friends with his mother.
Yeah.
He's heading to Texas. He's a big time in it too.
He just went to college out there and we, he, I've known him for a long time. We used to show with him, so.
I knew him when he was born. She was, she worked in my office and I remember her pregnant with him and she's been keeping us posted on his progress. It's been fun to watch. It's fun to watch you too.
So you're a freshman?
Yes, sir. Sophomore, going to sophomore, wasn't freshman.
How did you get started in this? It wasn't a bet, was it?
No.
Or dare?
No, I. I used to watch it a lot and I, my brother did it, like just kind of, he didn't do it really big. He just kind of rode like little steers and he did that for a while. And so I tried to, tried it on my twelfth birthday and I got, it was a lot and I was like, okay, should I really do this? And I went back a few months later and was trying to keep getting on and kept going every week. And that was over in Waynesville, so it was real close. We went, started going every week and I started getting on a lot of stuff like that, so. It was all throughout the years of trying to, so.
What's the worst injury you've had?
Uh, thank God, I have not broken no bones yet, so.
That's really good.
I've gotten just a small, like small minor injuries. I've got knocked out a few times, but. Yeah, I really don't know what's probably my worst.
Well, concussion's pretty bad.
Yeah, concussions are pretty bad, but.
And you're good with all this, mom?
Oh, I talk to Jesus a lot.
Obviously, they don't want their kids to play football, they're letting them run cows.
It's a fashion, so.
Cool.
Huge smile, you can tell you're really supportive.
Can you watch? Do you watch?
Uh, like. Yeah, it's hard to watch, but it's hard to say no when he's so passionate about it, so.
Do you have a workout routine?
Uh, I should. I should, I'm not in the right shape right now, but.
Mark Dean is specializing.
Yeah, bull rider. So I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation to Henry Pennick for, on the twelfth day of August, twenty twenty-five, for earning the title of state championship bull rider and competing on the Ohio National High School Rodeo Team at the Seventy-seventh Annual National High School Rodeo Finals. Congratulations.
Hey, it's picture-taking.
Four points in my life.
You grew up.
I did.
Oh, I don't even begin.
I'm glad there's social media.
Probably getting a pretty good workout walking around with that helmet on.
I'm proud, man.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll see you next year. Uh, next we have Brother Steven. I thought you were lay brother. What is it? You're gonna have to explain the difference. Uh, Brother Steven Gerard Sidolski. Yep.
Yep, that's it.
You've got a dream memory. Make an impression, you're a hard person to forget.
Right, Steven Gerard Sidolovsky, voting residence eleven oh nine, Eighth Street in Lorain, Ohio, the international city. I humbly come to all of you, mayor, council and citizens, to continue amplifying new Ohio personhood cities. You're not just the only city that I've been to. I've been to quite a few others, even in Warren County. I've provided you my updated letter, letting you know that, well, I have been in Indiana, so I've been away out of state for a little bit since we last spoke. But twenty-one of your Lebanon citizens have signed the advisory petition. I'd love to have a couple hundred signatures already, quite honestly, because that shows we're educating society. I have provided you personally the Ohio Preborn Personhood Advisory Petition. So if you're not doing anything, go to your churches, go out in the public and get some signatures for me too, because it means we're all invested in amplifying the new Ohio personhood cities. Remember, it's a two-step approach. The first approach, you already have the copy of the personhood resolution that I hope that you might consider passing by this coming Christmas. A lot of love and effort has gone into that. It might take a city attorney or attorneys to come up with ten thousand dollars just to write that, but I'm giving it to all of you for free, okay? That's step one of the USA personhood, personhood resolution. Step two, of course, is to actually have the citizens vote in that language. Do I have enough time to read that possible language for your city charter, beloved mayor? Do I have another minute?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So step two is to get the citizens to actually vote the language in. We can do that now because of the Dobbs decision over ruling the Roe decision. So I'm hoping your citizens, before your two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary, I see you started in eighteen oh two, so by twenty twenty-seven, the citizens would vote in the language, adding it to your charter as a preamble covenant. And it would be added as, in municipal covenant, we the people of Lebanon do hereby ordain and establish the following charter with God our Creator, with divine guidance for equality to all. We express our beliefs and convey our trust so that its concept shall long endure in perpetuity with regard to creation, conception, preborn personhood, birth, public safety, and without regard, this language is already in some Ohio charters, and without regard to age, race, color, sex, marital status, disability, handicap, religion, ancestry or national origin conferred by the U.S. Constitution. This is all the new direction for pro-life in America. I'm probably running out of time, but I just wanted to document that preamble covenant language. Thank you all. Thank you for your great love of Lebanon. I hope to continue to interact with you periodically. God bless you all.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Springbournes mentioned in this page a couple times. How, is this a Lebanon?
Oh, if I, if, yeah, if I accidentally forgot to remove Springbournes, just write in the word Lebanon.
Because it says return to Springbournes City Clerk.
Okay, so it should say return to Lebanon, uh, Lebanon Clerk, City Clerk. My apologies, just put a line through it and write the word Lebanon on there. Thank you for catching me and I was at your library.
Honestly, no, if there was.
I missed one.
Yeah, you're good.
Now you know I've already spoken at Lebanon and, or Springbournes also. Thank you all.
Thank you.
My apologies for the syntax.
Who would that be? Lebanon City Clerk. That would be Mr. Burke. Okay, so, I mean, just to the office or? Someone asked. Yeah.
Moving on to regular items, we do not have any previous business, so under new business, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight five.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight five, authorizing the city to enter into a purchase agreement for the purchase of property located at one fourteen South Broadway Avenue in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand dollars and declaring emergency. This ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Carl and Orville Martin for the purchase of eleven fourteen, or one fourteen South Broadway Avenue in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand dollars to support the city's economic development efforts.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Please hold your roll.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight six.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight six, amending chapter nine fourteen of codified ordinances regarding sewer use regulations and declaring an emergency. This ordinance revises chapter nine fourteen sewer use regulations to revise the allowable pH range in the city sewer system to reflect existing operational conditions, industry norms and the city's M D E S current.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Please hold your roll.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
I didn't have a back one on.
Nope.
You can read the next one.
Don't have a back one on. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight seven.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight seven, approving the ordinance with Conner Construction Group, doing businesses Real Development LLC for the development of city-owned property along Neil Armstrong Way and declaring emergency. This ordinance authorizes the city to enter into a development agreement with Real Development LLC to develop three-point-four acres of city-owned land located at the corner of Neil Armstrong Way and Harmon Avenue with a sale price of a hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any comments, questions?
For a second, whichever one of us spoke.
Please hold your roll.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight eight.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight eight, approving a donation of up to eleven thousand dollars towards the Joseph Born Alive Project. This resolution authorizes a donation of up to eleven thousand dollars towards the Joseph Born Alive statue and project and authorizes a supplemental appropriation to support this donation.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Comments? I actually saw multiple people over the weekend standing around the statue, reading the plaque. It was very, very cool to see that, that in action.
One bummer is there's a tree, that tree that's in front of it is right in front of it.
Right in front of it.
Who owns that tree?
It's a Bradford pear, right?
Uh, I'm not sure on that side.
It is. It'll fall. It'll fall under there. Please hold your roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Very good, we have an executive session, so before that, our city manager report and council comments.
Thank you, mayor. So the work session meeting that was scheduled for next week is canceled due to a lack of agenda items. So the next meeting of city council will be a voting meeting here on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth. And just want to remind folks, this Friday's Third Friday, downtown. That'll be the final Third Friday event, so encourage folks to come out and enjoy.
That's crazy. So Henry, what do you got?
I do not.
Mr. Norris?
I do, but I have to look at the, look at the word. Friday, from ten to four, and Saturday, ten to four, at the museum, there, this is what you asked me about. This is, from ten to four, is an assessing sale, I couldn't remember that word, assessing sale, where they're taking, and it has nothing to do with the museums and financial trouble, nothing like that. It's just they've got so much stuff and duplicates of stuff that they're gonna sell some of the items. And so there'll be some unique things, some, probably odd things. I think some people are bringing in some of their own antiquities as well. So that's ten to four on Friday, ten to four on Saturday, and it'll probably be in the Armstrong Center. And then Friday, if you haven't been to see the flag display that's in there, it's really, it's beautiful. It fills up a whole room. But they're taking the flags down Friday night and they're doing, a group's coming in and they're gonna do it royally. They're gonna do the, how they take the flags out full and whatnot, which probably, I'm not sure, I'll say fifty maybe flags in there, of all kinds, so if you've got something, if you're at Final Friday, or, yeah, Final Friday, and you want to come over just to spend some time there, you'd be welcome to do that too, so those are some pretty cool things happening.
Is it an auction or is it?
The, they're gonna do it where no price tags, so it's not a yard sale. You can bring it up and say, I'll give you this, and they may go two dollars more. So they're gonna make it fun, but, yeah, so they have some, if you're looking for some certain things, I think they said you asked about some stuff.
Yeah.
So if you've got an interest in history, you may find something really cool, so, very, thank you.
Is there anything that is, you know, worthwhile, maybe for Lebanon, some historic stuff that we could grab? It might be a painting for a wall or something?
He didn't have a, he didn't have a list of what it was that, the museum is, they have, they could outfit multiple other rooms. They have so much stuff, so they're only taking things like, like they may have a pot that goes by a fire which went out into the cabin. Well, they don't need five of them, so they're gonna sell.
Well, I was thinking specifically, like we have the picture downstairs.
Oh, there may be.
Of, you know, of Lebanon early on, stuff like that.
If you, if you have something specific that you think, I could, I mean, I'd be happy to shoot it over Michael and we could go over and bet on it, you know, something like that. If you, that's a good idea, there may be, yeah, something that pertains to Lebanon, exact Lebanon history, so, yeah.
Do I go?
Oh, other than, I'm curious how the farmer's market's been doing. I mean, I've stopped by again on the, just stopping by more than I have ever, really, and it seems pretty busy. People buying stuff.
Yeah, I think it's good. It tends to peak kind of early summer and then late summer it does kind of, you know, a little bit, you know, not quite as busy, but I think generally speaking, it's been strong. The vendors have been happy. There's lots of, I mean, it's a great place if you're looking for locally grown produce, you know, meat products. Just a great group of vendors and encourage folks to, you know, support local small businesses.
Is there any way that we can continue that at the fairgrounds?
That could be an option. I mean, that could be a discussion, especially, I know some of the vendors have an interest and have had an interest indoors, you know, throughout the winter and obviously there's some indoor buildings there, so I think it'd be, so that could definitely be an option as we, you know.
Could we get, just say, a general consensus from the vendors that we have now?
How many would do it?
How many would want to continue?
And then.
You may get vendors too. I worked with a lady who sold cookies and gluten-free stuff and she, like, I think Lebanon did an indoor one year round. You may get interest from other farmer's markets who closed and then people are still, they're still baking, they still need it to make, you know. That's a great idea.
Well, I just want to make sure if whoever, like, if there's somebody that is over the, kind of organizes it, if there's a voice of, hey, I wish we could do this better, that we're able, we have someone that we can, they can kind of either represent them or visually come to us.
Yeah, we have, Bill and Raj in our parks, he's there.
Yeah, he sits there.
We got a city employee that's out there during the.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's been a good opportunity to promote some of our other, you know, city activities through that kind of information table, but, yeah. It's, gosh, I feel like it's like the fifteenth year we've had, well, in farmer's markets.
Yeah, that's why we should support it how we can.
We had, we had talked earlier and I'm not, this is not, by no means we're doing this, so I don't mean, miss, I'm hurt, but I've been thinking a lot about, it's possibly covering a section at some point. I was talking to Michael from the museum, there's actually, there is a, there's a rendering or an old building. It used to be a covered building, I forgot what it was used for, that can be duplicated, maybe smaller, but I just know, for those of us who work outside, this has been one hot summer and those folks sitting out and that direct sun is hot and that could be used for other things too, for the concerts, people could sit under during a concert. But I, I would really support down the road when, you know, when things are available to look into possibly doing some type of, of cover, making it look retro like it did in the old days.
Cover it with solar panels.
Yeah, and then still have solar panels.
We will call ye olde solar panels.
Ye olde.
You're not sure. Okay, let's see here. First of all, National Light Out was great, even though it rained. It was a very good turnout. I was impressed with how many people were there and my kids loved it and came home with so many things. I mean, people are so generous and just, I mean, bags full of stuff that they were given. So I, I know a lot of work goes into that, so I was sad to see there was rain, but there was still a really good turnout. People were just walking around so happy, so that was good to see. And so thank you to the police department, the fire department and everybody else who participates in that. And then tomorrow at six o'clock, we will be having a meeting for the Hope Walk. I shouldn't say really a meeting, it's more of a informational session like they did last year, which is some information about human trafficking and things. This is not the family-friendly portion, but this is a really good opportunity for adults to hear more about that and to hear from some individuals who are helping survivors and working with those individuals. So that will be tomorrow, Wednesday at six o'clock in the ministry portion of script in the back. So everyone is welcome to come to that.
Very good. My daughter and I were in DC this weekend and we inadvertently became part of a ceremony that I knew nothing about. So I wanted to bring it to your attention just in case you know a veteran. Apparently you can contact the park service and they will do a walkthrough with a folded flag for a retirement of a veteran or a veteran that has passed away and they'll be able to use that at their funeral. So we just happened to show up for a ranger tour of the Korean and Vietnam War memorials and there was no one else but me and my daughter and the ranger. And this man that was flying in from Tinker Air Force Base, he's retiring from the Air Force next year. And so he went down to the V part of the wall and he stood there. And the ranger, you have to carry the flag a certain way, the ranger walked the flag down to him and met him and they did kind of a pass-off ceremony. And then the Air Force officer took the flag and walked the rest of the memorial. And then they were gonna do each memorial on the grounds of the mall. I thought that was really special. And so, yeah, my daughter got to take pictures for them to have as keepsake. So just keep that in mind, pass it on to your veterans.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
It is pretty cool. I think, I can't remember if this went out to everyone already, but our solar proforma?
I did send my own account.
Yeah, but I just kind of wanted to mention this in our meeting here. So our original, our original proforma had our solar arrays, saving the city around a million dollars. So our original, our original pro forma had our solar arrays saving the city around a million dollars, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand. So we purposely, uh, went conservative with those estimates. So our, uh, currently, in twenty twenty-five, our savings is one point seven eight three million. So we are all, we're coming up on doubling what we expected to save, uh, our citizens. So I just thought that was a very cool, um.
Is that the end of July, as of the end of July?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're projecting for our annual savings, kind of based on performance looking at an entire year.
So I thought that was, I thought that was very good. So that means our ROI is even better than we thought it was and.
But we were at nine, only nine years?
Nine years before, at that nine twenty-four number.
Thinking five, five years.
Yeah.
Wow.
So solar panels on the parking lot.
You can sponsor that.
I'll sponsor that. Mark, can you read us an executive session?
This is gonna be long, so. Don't get me wrong. You know, motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revise Code one twenty-two G two to consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property in competitive bidding to premature disclosure of information when given unfair competitor bargaining. To a person whose personal or private interest is adverse to the general public interest. And G seven to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting or requests for economic development assistance, provided that both of the following conditions apply. The information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under any provision of chapter seven fifteen, seven twenty-five, seventeen twenty-four, or seventeen twenty-eight, or section seventeen oh one point zero seven thirty-seven thirty-five point sixty-seven to thirty-seven thirty-five point seventy, uh, fifty-seven oh nine point four zero to fifty-seven oh nine point four three, fifty-seven oh nine point six one to fifty-seven oh nine point six nine, fifty-seven oh nine point seven three to fifty-seven oh nine point seven five, or fifty-seven oh nine point seven seven to fifty-seven oh nine point eight one of the Ohio Revise Code, where that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. And the unanimous quorum of the public body determined by roll call, roll call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interest of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project.
I think you missed one section.
Yeah, you usually have that memorized.
More and more. Don't use seven all that, but use two a lot, G two.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Please hold a roll.
Mrs. Eggers?
Yes.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us and we'll see you in two weeks.